If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Flag's over here. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda, please? Commissioner Seguino, seconded by Commissioner Judson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Nina, thank you. Want to open it up next to public comments and questions? Do we have anybody that's signed up so far? Thank you, Commissioner Kirk. Helen Hosley?
Good evening, welcome back to another exciting school year. My name is Helen Hosley and I live in Ward 6. I'd like to welcome our new superintendent and I trust that you hit the ground running. And thank you for moving the school board meetings back into the school level, my appreciation has been short-lived and then moved back to City Hall, which isn't appropriate, in my opinion. I have several questions this evening that have been asked previously of school board members.
Can you speak directly?
I want to speak directly into them.
Thank you.
So I've asked previously of other school board members that the answers just don't seem to be there, so I request a written response via email and I'll submit this document for public view. Number one, has the contract with our new superintendent been negotiated since we don't have him on a full-time basis? Number two, at last count, there were four attorneys on VSP's payroll, Joe McNeil, two people in the HR department, and one attorney firm hired to help with the visa process. How necessary is it to have a large concentration of highly-paid personnel in one district? How do we compare this to the surrounding districts when it comes to attorneys? It's my understanding that for every $20,000 to $25,000 spent, it equates to one educational assistant. Four attorneys represent many, eight aides. What type of diversity training is the diversity coordinator going to perform this year? Is she going to get into the classrooms? In the past, each classroom teacher was given a budget to purchase supplies or materials. That doesn't seem to be the case this year. Where are the budgets for the classroom teachers? Speaking of budgets, what's going to be the amount of deficit the taxpayers will have to make up in the 2016-17 budget? On another note, is there enough space for the current student population? If not, was the plan given to change of course for the purchase of St. Joe's? Is there a plan for the anticipated influx of refugees, Syrian or otherwise, that could come our way in the next two to three years? And lastly, is the school district going to honor commitments to the teachers during their contract negotiations to keep salaries in the mid-range of salaries compared to the surrounding districts? This was a promise made from the last school board when negotiations for the teachers' contracts came around. This will help retain and attract talent. Thank you for your time and I'll submit this for public view.
Thank you. Alan Mattson. Welcome, Alan.
Hi, Alan. Is this, okay, there we go. Because I know it's on the record, I'm Alan Mattson. I live in Ward 6. I'm a parent of one student and one graduating student from Burlington High School. And as most of you on the board know, I'm a former school board member who served up through until April. Not surprised to most of you, but I do want to say it should be on the record. I too came here primarily tonight to welcome you. I think I've said to a number of school board members in emails, I'm really looking forward to your tenure. And, you know, as part of the decision, and I really hope to be part of the community that welcomes you into Burlington as part of our, not just educational system, but really part of the community. So, welcome, and I really am looking forward to this. I've also, over the past two weeks, seen things that I feel also have some exciting possibilities to them. I think the connection that we are building, perhaps through the joint work that you're going to be doing with the university can only help in this world of multiple pathways. I think that there's great opportunities there that the school district will, I think, be able to build upon, and I think that this is also an exciting opportunity for us. Also, at this time, I wanted to thank, first, I would like to thank the board for all the work that you've done over the past several months, you know, making sure that we can effect this transition. Two, I'd like to thank the staff. I know that the staff has been, has had, has had a lot on their plates. I know it was on the plates when I stepped off in April, and I'm sure it hasn't changed. If anything, it's greater. So, I'd like to thank the staff for the work that they've been doing. And I'd like to say, thank, of course, all the professionals and all of the parties in the buildings, because, you know, my daughter's a senior this year, I still get into the schools for middle school work, and, you know, it's still exciting to see the new school year start and everybody's really energized. And so, I wanted to come on tonight, I had a reason to come out tonight. I also know that, you know, there's a small honorary thing going on tonight for Ben Woods-Lewis, and I wanted to be here to hear that as well. So, everybody, you know, thank you again, welcome, and look forward to, you know, not just the next year of my daughter, but hopefully for quite a while here, being in the community as part of the Burlington scene. Thanks.
Thanks, Alan. Good seeing you again. We have a moment here for any board reflections, if anyone would like to say anything. Commissioner Kirk.
First off, first, I, hello? Maybe not. How about that? I guess not. Hi. No, nothing? All right. So, first off, what I'd like to do is just, I was on the committee that was in superintendent search. I'd just like to welcome you. I had questions all the way through, and I was probably question mark more about anything on your transition end, but welcome. I hope that this is successful for all of us. And that's all I hope for at the end of the day, is that the school district runs clean, smooth, and efficiently. So, I'm welcoming you and hoping that you're ready to hit the road running and get things moving. So, welcome, y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll close that. Moving on to the board report, I have a short statement to read welcoming incoming superintendent Yao Obeng.
Over the last 10 years, Burlington has evolved into a culturally rich city with a school district that reflects the mosaic that enriches our community. Students speak a multiplicity of languages and indeed, the schools reflect a more international and global character than most of Vermont's school districts. About half of our students' families face economic challenges, and many families have young children that require intense academics in the early years. Burlington needs to provide challenging opportunities across all demographics. We started the superintendent search with the understanding that both the community and the board are committed to ensuring a high-quality education for all students. The school board and the advisory search committee sought a superintendent with experience commensurate with the character and needs of our district, who could also overcome the financial challenges to support the quality of education that our community wants, while respecting the taxpayers' fatigue with funding education through annual increases to property taxes. In a pool of 60 candidates, Mr. Obeng stood out. In his most recent position in Canada, he was superintendent of education of 27 schools in the Halton School District in Ontario. He has been a strong and effective leader, working to align curriculum expectations, develop supportive networks in the school, and address inequalities in outcomes. One measure of his effectiveness is that during his tenure, student achievement met or exceeded provincial standards. Additionally, Mr. Obeng has had experience in developing intervention plans to address student gaps and outcomes in both math and literacy. He was responsible for developing and implementing a safe school structure for over 61,000 students and has a strong background in the delivery of education to English-language learning students. Indeed, he himself was once an ELL student in the U.S. in the primary grades before moving to Canada. Yao also proved to be skilled at fostering partnerships between the Halton School District, School Board District, and community organizations in ways that expanded opportunities for children. Moreover, his experience in budget development that included engaging high levels of stakeholder participation stood out among the pool of candidates for this job. We welcome our new superintendent to the Burlington Schools and are excited to benefit from his breadth of experience and vision that he brings to the community, and most importantly, to the students within our district. Welcome, Yao.
Thank you. First of all, thank you to all the well wishers throughout the entire process and my arrival. One of the things I thought about on this sort of inaugural night for me, and I hope for you as well, too, is that my mother told me never to go into a new home without bringing some sort of gift. So, as a thank you, I wanted to share some thoughts, as long as, as well as some gifts to the board for their appreciation, to show my appreciation for their support of my candidacy. First of all, as being at first weeks of school, and, you know, any good teacher always comes prepared in terms of supplying their students with the utensils needed, and so I've brought for each board member a pencil. So, you might remember back to your school days when the teacher used to give you a pencil, maybe a notebook to start. It's actually a Canadian pencil, but I think the materials are made in the U.S. So, if I would toss along, and I hope you're able to take this, not only to learn, but obviously for you to teach me things about Burlington and the school district as we move forward. I do want to address our vice chair and chair as well, too, because I know they've put a significant amount of work into the process and my arrival here. I'd like to pass this to Commissioner Seguino. And I'll have you open up, and then I'll share with you sort of the meeting I have for what I've just passed you. I just hope it's the right box. Okay. So, you may not be able to see it from across the room, but what she's holding up is an Nukshuk. And Nukshuk is, it's a statue made of stone, and it comes from the Inuit community, which is very north in Canada, as well as in the Arctic. And I thought this was quite significant. One, first of all, to respect our First Nations and Native Americans, who, the land that we sit on, were previously governed by them, so to show that respect. Also, a Nukshuk is a symbol that was always used to navigate and guide. And I know that for the vice chair and for the chair, the opportunity to navigate us through the course of the year, through our budget challenges, our Quiklym challenges, and the community engagement, that hopefully you can use as a touchstone as you navigate. It also shows the symbiotic relationship between nature and humans, and the collaboration we will need in order to be successful as we move forward. So, I share that with you as a gift to you, but also as a sharing of a gift to the entire board in terms of our anticipated collaboration in developing our relationships.
Thank you, Yao.
And last, but not least, for our esteemed chair.
Oh, boy. Not a chocolate bar.
Should be a chocolate bar.
He doesn't know me. It's not a chocolate bar.
Oh, how nice.
So, if you want to hold that up, just quickly. So, okay, so you can see this is an embossment of coins from Canada, and the coin at the top is a penny. And if you've sort of followed sort of the news in the last few years, in Canada, we've eliminated the penny. It's been retired. And I see the coins there, and I give that to Commissioner Porter in our fiscal responsibilities. I know we'll be looking at all the nickels and dimes and counting out pennies.
Commissioner Stoll?
So, it's another touchstone for us to remind us that we are accountable, not just to our students and our communities, but to ourselves, in ensuring that we put forward initiatives and practices that are going to be effective, but also fiscally responsible as we move forward. So, once again, thank you, and I want to take this opportunity to thank all the community members who have contacted me through email, cards, post mail, and congratulating me and encouraging me through this process. And now that I'm finally here, I'm looking forward to engaging with the community and staff as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next time, a candy bar.
Just putting that out there.
Good old-fashioned chunky.
There is a vending machine back there.
Yes. Thank you very much. Next up is Commissioner Stoll.
The board wanted to take a moment today, tonight, to remember one of our beloved students who very sadly passed away this summer. Ben Wood Lewis attended Burlington School District schools from kindergarten at Champlain through Edmunds Middle School to BHS, where he was a ninth grader last year. He was active in the Burlington High School community. Two of the things he did were to play basketball with the Unified Sports Team, and recently helped to develop a new initiative at the high school, which are the advisories that will be starting this year. He was one of the kids that worked on that initiative. Ben was a radiant young man who will be sorely missed by students, faculty, parents, and the community at large. I wanted to take one moment to read something written by Alan Mattson, who you heard from earlier. As he said before, he was a former board member and board chair, and he wrote this, and I just felt it was worthwhile repeating. Having served the Burlington community, I saw firsthand the positive energy that Ben Wood Lewis brought to everyone he touched in the Burlington schools. Yet Ben's legacy in the schools will go well beyond those he met, learned with, played with, learned from, and taught. Ben, his family, and the community members that they brought together with them helped change the way that the Burlington School District approaches accessibility and inclusion in its facilities and in its curriculum. This changed approach has informed not just Champlain and Edmunds, but is also at the core of rethinking the Burlington High School campus, which Yao is a project that we are about to embark on with your help. Ben's presence in the Burlington School District will live on through the generations. Thank you.
Thank you. If you don't mind, we'd all like to just take a moment of silence in memory of Ben at this time. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mary. Moving on to our next item, the last piece of the board report. I have, I'm sure everybody's read the combined committee goals that brought it all together. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the committee goals and the board goals for 2015-2016. If I have a second. Commissioner Seguino. All those in favor, please say aye. All those against? Motion moves. Thank you. This time, I'd like to turn it over to incoming superintendent Obeng for the superintendent's report. Just one second, please. I'm sorry.
Just a question. Do you think it would make sense just to quickly have someone read those goals so the community that's here can read them, or at least indicate where they can be found?
Certainly, yeah. They're available on the board docs right now, under the agenda for this meeting. Yeah. And if not, I will get them there by the end of the meeting. They're there, okay. All right. Thank you. So, if anybody wants to read those, those are available on board docs for the Burlington School District, under the agenda for tonight. Thank you, Commissioner Stoll. Superintendent's report.
Thank you. I'd like to start with the first piece is around the budget calendar cycle. I'd like to call Senior Director Nathan to articulate some of the pieces, and we'll highlight some of the areas as we embark on this process.
Good evening, everyone. Am I speaking into the microphone close enough? It doesn't sound like I am.
No. It's not pretty good.
I can't get a whole lot closer.
Is it on? Is it on?
Test. Okay, great. Good evening. So, the budget calendar is something that the board's seen before, but it's available again this evening on board docs. And I just wanted to give folks a brief update of the general status of where we're at right now. So, we're in a period, in fact, I don't know if we can get it up online, but for those of you who have it or have access to it on your devices, you can see that we're in kind of a June to September period that just says generically, research work conducted. And so, the vision for this period on the timeline was for particularly principals, but as well as some other directors and other staff, to consider a few of the ideas that have come forth about areas for possible additional investment. And so, over the next couple of months, we're going to see some work done in this area. And I'll just give you a general sense of what some of those areas are, the areas for exploration. They include assistance for kindergarten classrooms, some work around ELL redesign, and potential investment in our new arrivals. There's also going to be some work done exploring and looking at opportunities to change the administrative support model that we currently have in schools. And there's also potential to explore some areas around the elementary unified arts, making sure that what we're offering is consistent in terms of what we offer to the students, as well as how we're staffing those offerings. And one final possible area that we have as a hint of exploration is our investments in recruiting and retention of staff. So, those are a few of the areas, and there's going to be some staff work done to see what opportunities are out there for investments, and we'll plan to bring forward some, the results of that work at the October board meeting, when we just kind of give you a ballpark sense of what it would cost to make some of those investments. So, that's where we're at right now with the calendar, and just again, as a reminder to folks, it's available on board docs, so you can check in and see where we're at with the process. Any questions at this time?
Our kindergarten, am I on?
Yes, yes.
Is the possibility of kindergarten pairs woven into any of the items that you expressed?
Yes, the assistance to kindergarten classrooms generally could include that, but we didn't want to limit ourselves to, you know, just that is the only solution. Right. While you're there, I want to do a sale of Murray Street. Sure, I can go. The update on Murray Street, so September 1st, Chair Mark Porter was in attendance when we closed on the sale of Murray Street, so the Burlington School District no longer owns that property. In the end, we reached a final sales price of $239,000, and we paid our realtors. There was a 5% commission, which was part of working with the reorder, which folks might remember I brought forward when we were awarding the bid to work with us on the sale of that property. So, that means that we in total paid nearly $12,000 in commissions on the sale, which is 5%, and the net proceeds from the sale after commissions was $227,050, so a couple thousand dollars more than we'd actually anticipated getting when we budgeted for the sale last fiscal year, which again, as we know, didn't happen. So, that's going to be revenue that is realized in the current fiscal year that was not budgeted. But the good news is, the sale is complete, finally, and so, yeah, hopefully this will be the last Murray Street update.
So, the, one of the next items around training, and the board had asked us to be looking to training and supports for board's capacity building. Board's capacity building. So, I've done investigation with the Vermont Superintendent's Association and looked at some other areas in terms of what are the possibilities for our board. And there's a number of different types of training that are targeted for board development, but I know the board had expressed interest in looking at some areas around policy governance, in terms of some training around that, and areas around equity, equity and diversity and inclusion. So, what I'm proposing is that once all the information is compiled in, I will return to the board with a schedule and some options in terms of what would meet the board's immediate needs and also long-term needs. So, I'm quite excited about the response that I've gotten so far in terms of queries from other parts of Vermont, in terms of what's happened in other districts and where the possibilities are, and I hope the board will be conducive to looking at a schedule that will be able to continue to build the capacity of the board. And last but not least, I'd like to introduce a new staff member we have, so in our back that's accompanied with Nathan in the back there. Senior accountant Elizabeth Atkins joins us with over a decade of school accounting experience from her tenure with Addison Northeast Supervisory Union. So, at the union, she supervised accounting operations for the entire Supervisory Union, including six schools. She's familiar with state and federal grant requirements, preparation of monthly and annual financial statements, and numerous accounting activities particular to Vermont school finance. She was born and raised in Vermont. Elizabeth currently resides in Lincoln with her family. She's a superb addition to the business office, and we're thrilled to have her. So, welcome, Elizabeth, and I hope you all can give her a great look. So, I know that Elizabeth has been, is doing a lot of accounting. She's got a lot of accounting to do. So, we will dismiss you, Elizabeth, so you can get back to your closet and keep counting all the beans that we have. Okay, thank you. I think the last item I had was around the Edmunds School development. So, I had investigated in terms of looking at an opportunity for the board to do a tour. One of the questions I think I'll have to come back with is, is the board looking to do a tour together, or scheduling individual, you know, visits? From what I understand from the school principal, there's still a few weeks before they're prepared to do an official showing, so we'll give them a few weeks to do that, and maybe by beginning of October, we can decide on the tour as a whole or individually based on your time allowance. But it will be an exciting opportunity to see the elevator and accessibility needs being met at school.
Thank you. Did you want to talk about your 100-day plan?
All right, let's talk about the plan. Upon entry, I do have a 100-day plan, and the plan will be, it's been posted, but we'll post it again online to people to review it. Some of the highlights around the plan, really, you're looking at the organizational structure. So, it'll be an opportunity to engage both staff, students, community members around some of the needs of the district. And I've tried to make it as grander as possible to get some of the specifics to help me in analysis in terms of how we move forward. There will be opportunities for everyone to engage in that. I have had a chance to do a large forum with teachers. There will, there will be surveys that go out to teachers. There'll be opportunities to talk one-on-one and do one-on-one conversations specific with central staff around their roles, analysis around their work, and what the needs are, and what the wants are. But the part that I'm really excited about is coming out to the community. In the next couple of weeks, you will see a schedule where we'll come out to community, I mean, the school communities, and have I mean, the school communities, and have the opportunity for parents and community members to give me some feedback around what they see in the district, what they feel the needs are, and of course, what their desires are. I think that will help in terms of gathering all the types of data, both empirical and anecdotal, because that's important, because the anecdotal tells the stories behind the individuals and the people that we serve. To look at planning, doing a plan that will move forward. I'm really sort of anticipating that the data will help us set some real long-term goals for the board, so we can establish some budget priorities and align that with our major goals and continue year over year without having to revisit too much of what we have to do. But I'm sure that there are things that we can improve on, although I know it's a great board, but we're looking for continuous improvement. So look forward, probably within another week or so, I will do sort of an official public launch and set out some dates where people can come and engage with me. There'll be electronic form as well, as well as hard copies of templates for people to communicate through the school to me. And then there'll be public forums and opportunities to engage verbally and gather some more information. So look forward to that.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Obeng? Thank you. Moving on to the approval of the consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Commissioner Harrington, do I have a second?
No one's seconding it. I'll second it.
No, no, both hands, one of them's seconding it.
I was reading it, so long.
So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Passes unanimously, thank you. Moving on to item seven, the curriculum committee report. Commissioner Dotson, do you have a report, or have you met this month yet? You just met us now, right? Okay.
Not much to say. We continue to... Oh, my bad. Sorry about that. Yes, so we met and we spent a little time beginning to discuss how school year opened with regard to the implementation of new supports. That's connected to the kindergarten power conversation, but not exclusive to that. It's a model for support at elementary level that's in the building that uses these literacy and math specialists, as well as sort of bringing together the support of other existing powers, special education powers, sociologists, psychologists, et cetera. So school just opened, there's not very much data at this point, but we were just updated on the conversations that have gone well. Dylan McMiner and Stephanie Phillips have received some feedback, it's been positive thus far, or no negative, about how things are going with opening, so we'll continue to look at that. We talked about our committee goals, which our people can read them there, so we just did another discussion of that. And we met with diversity and equity to talk about two goals in common, looking at the implementation of a new formal evaluation program for teachers, and then back to the issue of the interventionist specialists, and particularly how each of those initiatives will have a diversity lens that is integrated into that work. So we'll continue to look at those things. And lastly, we continue to talk just about the evolution of the committee and what it means for us as the board at large considers a policy governance model, and we move together collectively as the combined board and what that means in our committee for our work and what we do in our individual meetings. So that's an ongoing conversation.
Thank you. Any questions for Commissioner Dotson?
It's a simple question that you may not have the answer to yet. When is the next curriculum meeting?
We always, we, our new schedules, we will meet prior to the combined meeting, so the second Tuesday of the month, and that'll be 6:00 p.m.
What do you mean by the combined meeting?
This, the...
The full board?
Full board.
So it's going to be 6:00 p.m. on the second Tuesday of every month?
That's correct.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Commissioner Dotson? Thank you. Commissioner Seguino, diversity and equity?
Thank you. Diversity and equity didn't meet in August. We did just have a brief meeting, as Commissioner Dotson mentioned, with regard to our overlapping goals. I will say that we are meeting on September 21st this month. It's an unusual date for us, but because of holidays and so forth, we'll be meeting on a Monday night at 7:00 p.m. on September 21st, our Allen. And we're going to use that opportunity, we have some agenda items, but in particular to talk to Superintendent Obeng about our committee's goals and to kind of have a deeper discussion about those goals and get some of his perspective on it. So I hope that some of the board members, if you're interested, would join us. I think it'll be a rich discussion. Thanks.
Commissioner Gina?
I'm sorry to be the scheduling person, but you said 7:00 p.m. Is it 7:00 or 7:15?
7:15.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
And I think also, community members, if you're curious, should feel free to come, not just additional board members. If members of the community want to come and hear us review the goals with the new superintendent, you're welcome, as always. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else have a question for Commissioner Seguino? Commissioner Justin?
What's the protocol for asking a question that shouldn't have been asked when we were talking about finances?
Here's a finance update coming.
Actually, you can ask a question when we get to the finance committee if you'd like to.
Thank you.
Good call, Commissioner Gina, thank you. Policy and Governance, please. Commissioner Curry?
The Policy and Governance Committee got started on its work exploring policy governance. And we were really honored to have as a guest for an hour the Chair of the Town of Essex School Board, Kim Gleason. She was incredibly informative and really helped to drill down into explaining what policy governance looks like for them on the ground. And we talked about a lot of different things, how they got into policy governance, how it works, and answered a lot of great questions. So our committee is, you know, probably 50% more up to speed than we were before that. And the next meeting, we'll talk about next steps and continue to explore that and, you know, kind of suss out when committee members feel ready to take the next step and maybe suggest training for the full board with our new superintendent. So that was really delightful to have Kim there. Then secondly, we picked up the, from the last meeting, we had the first reading of the policy preventing hazing, bullying, harassment that is now a template from the state. So we had that first reading at the last board meeting. There were some comments and suggestions, and we discussed what needed to be revised, and we made those changes. And so you'll see on the agenda tonight, the second reading after our committee reports. Any questions?
I want to see if I can ask more than Brian.
Good luck.
Yeah, don't challenge me now.
Do you think it would be appropriate to explain what policy governance is for those who could use a 30-second explanation in terms of the board going towards policy governance?
I was trying to do that during our retreat. Would anybody like another little... For the public. Policy governance is a model of board governance and oversight that, that I can't, I don't think I can even do it. Could anyone else do it? In 30 seconds or less? Yeah, you've had some more training than me.
30, it's a lot of pressure, 30 seconds. So policy governance is a model of board behavior or activity in which you create a core group of simple policies that you adhere by, and you ensure that they're being adhered by. And the way that you monitor that is by a series of reports that come from the administration. So it moves away from a model of micromanaging and getting super involved in the day-to-day decisions, and rather looking at these reports as a way of measuring progress towards goals and, which align with the vision and mission of a district, which is all kind of guided by policy. I probably missed something, but that's...
Thank you, Brian.
Short explanation.
Before we get to the motions, are there any other questions for Commissioner Curry? Commissioner Curry?
Great. So I'd like to move the second reading of the policy preventing bullying, harassment, and hazing, not in that order.
Mark's seconding it.
I'm sorry, I just...
I didn't understand the last phrase. Say it again.
The motion is on the agenda. I'd like to move, motion to approve the second reading of the policy preventing harassment, bullying, and hazing.
Seconded by Commissioner Barlow. All those in favor of the motion to approve the second reading of the policy F-29R?
Call for discussion.
We have to.
All right, any discussion? Commissioner Seguino?
Just want to ask if Commissioner Curry could just briefly describe the changes from the first reading to the second reading. We've all looked at it, but I just thought it'd be useful to summarize it.
Sure, there were a couple of concerns about the language in the original documents followed the state, the State Agency of Education. After the legislature in 2012 changed some of the statutory requirements around preventing harassment, bullying, and hazing in Vermont schools, the Agency of Education then developed a set of template documents, including a policy and a set of procedures for all districts. And those templates were somewhat more broad than this district felt it needed. In other words, there were a number of procedures that we thought we needed more specificity on, and there was an element of the policy that we wanted to create some more specificity on. So those areas included, not in any particular order. Number one, there's a definition of gender identity that we actually didn't change, but we're not happy with. The definition uses the term gender identity twice to define itself, which is never good practice. So the committee discussion that's reflected in the minutes is that we're hopeful that in implementing the training that's required by the statute and the procedures, that the superintendent will just accept the board's suggestion or request that trainings be more explicit and more complete around explaining, defining gender identity and not just convey the very narrow definition in the documents. Secondly, around data, the Agency of Education itself requires that incidents related to harassment, bullying, and hazing are reported to the agency every year, yet the standard template language did not actually include very much specificity about that data. So we, for this district, are having the data reported annually to the Diversity and Equity Committee or such other committee as the board decides, and then explicitly having this district report it to the AOE every year. Third was a little fuzzier, if you'll bear with me. There was kind of a, just a technical change around record keeping. And the initial language had confidential records kept in, by 18 different people, and the committee felt like this exposed the district to risk, particularly around confidentiality. So we narrowed this language to have record keeping under the purview of the superintendent, who would then designate where our records are kept and by whom they're kept.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion, please?
There was one other change. We clarified the definition of gender expression.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Stoll?
Just a question of procedures. So we're voting on just the policy. So the procedures you have listed here, we're not officially adopting those procedures? Or are we...
We are officially adopting these procedures, which, thank you for raising that. This is a departure from the board's role. Typically, procedures would be developed on most policies by the superintendent, but these specifically are related to a statutory requirement. So for that reason, the AOE is asking districts to adopt the policies and procedures together since they are standardized. Thank you.
And just so you, Commissioner Stoll, there's going to be two motions.
Okay.
Right? The first one is just to approve the second reading. And the second, the next one will be for the policy and procedures.
All right, thank you.
Any further discussion regarding the motion to approve the second reading of policy F-29, prevention of harassment, hazing, and bullying of students?
I'm sorry, we should be adopting the second reading of the policy and procedures. Was that my oversight in the language? They should, they should stick together.
I thought we had two different motions.
The two different motions are, the first motion is to approve the second reading...
That's right.
...of the policy...
That's what I'm doing.
...and procedures. The second motion is to adopt the policy and procedures. I may have inadvertently left out the word procedures.
Nope, that's fine.
Okay, so thank you for raising that.
Do we technically have to withdraw the motion and make a new one, since she has to correct it, and it is a significant correction? You're our expert.
I think in discussion, we're just...
We could just make a separate motion to adopt the second reading of the procedures. That would be quicker.
Okay.
You want to read that back, Commissioner Curry?
What, the motion?
I just lost track of where things went.
So we're going to do two motions. So this motion is to approve the second reading of the policy, which was seconded by Commissioner Barlow, I think.
Okay. So seeing no further discussion, we have a motion to approve the second reading of the policy F-29R, prevention of harassment, hazing, and bullying of students. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Commissioner Curry?
Motion to approve the second reading of the procedures related to the prevention of harassment, bullying, and hazing.
Second.
Discussion.
Susan Marie Harrington, second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against? She unanimously passes. Commissioner Curry?
Motion to adopt the policy and procedures preventing harassment, hazing, and bullying of students.
I second.
Commissioner Curry, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes unanimously. Commissioner Curry, anything else?
Nothing else, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kirk, Infrastructure and Technology Committee report, please.
Voila. I'm up. So ITC has had a pretty eventless summer. We already discussed Murray Street and the sale. The big thing, the big project, was the Edmonds. And most of our meeting was taken up by a tour of the Edmonds facility, and oh my God, the bathrooms smell fantastic. Really cool. So we have all new bathrooms at Edmonds, new stairs. The progress wasn't, they weren't completed on our tour, but things were very much well on their way, and things really look good. The bathrooms were all replaced and are looking good. So that was money well spent on refabbing that area of the school. They also redid the gym floor, the old wood gym floor. Oh my God, it shines, it's beautiful, it looks very nice. I have pictures if anybody wants to see them, or take the tour, it's coming up. It was really cool to see. So Edmonds has got a new facelift and some new life pushed back into it. So that's, again, money well spent by a district that's constantly struggling. But if we don't maintain, we're going to be in a bad way. Which brings us to the next thing, is the study on our buildings and how we're going to maintain them in the future and the direction we're going. That is well underway as well. The study is going on. We've got people in place that are going to evaluate that study and prioritize. We made a motion to put those people in place, and things are moving forward on that front as well. Again, in my opinion, money well spent for the district. We need to make sure that these buildings can be here in the future, and that we can plan for them with the city, so that the city, when they're asking for a $50 million bond for a new whatever facility, we're not out there asking, we're competing for that same bond. So this is in conjunction with the city, and the city has pledged in BED, I believe, it's pledged significant funds to match funds with us so that we can get through this without it all being a burden on the school district. And pretty much, that's where ITC is left at this point.
Thank you. Any questions for ITC, please? Commissioner Seguino?
Commissioner, two questions. One, when do you expect the study to be completed?
I don't know. I don't have that answer.
I see.
Okay. Okay.
I mean, do you have a timeline for when you're going to put out bids, or, or-
The study's-
The bid has been awarded.
It's in the works.
So, there was their deadline for an initial report, or anything like that?
Yes, the bid has been awarded. Yes, the bid's been awarded.
Yeah.
I don't know if there's a timeline. I don't, I don't have the answer if there's a timeline on that.
I see.
I can't answer that question.
Just to say that it would be helpful to know at some point, so that we can understand kind of how it affects our workload as a board, right? When, when that's coming. My second question is, can you give us an update on, on the search for space for On Top and Horizon?
Actually-
Can I just go back to the time? I think it's written into their description of how many months they think it's going to take each section of-
Thank you, thanks.
As far as On Top and Horizons, it's been placed with a commercial contractor. There has been some, there has been two places that have been looked at significantly. I'm not supposed to say where they are at this point. One place was an alternative high school program, but part of the, part of the process at this point, as I understand it, is we have separated the two, two programs, On Top and Horizons, looked at them independently, because they're going to be easier to place, because their needs are completely different. So, that, with that said, at our last meeting, they had two places that they were looking at, and again, one was an alternative high school in the past that has since closed, and it is within city limits, but I don't know where that left, and Paul is not here this evening to answer that question. And I don't know if Nate has anything else on that.
Not on that.
Not on that? No. So, it's in the works. And one other thing I forgot to mention, on a different note, is that Finance and ITC have been in discussions with streamlining committees here, and working with Finance and ITC to come to possibly becoming one committee instead of two, seeing how we both are significantly, spending significant amounts of money or directed in that direction. Anything else, Stephanie?
Incoming Superintendent Obeng.
Through the chair to- Through the chair to the board. I did meet with Senior Director Labrie this week around the master plan, and he may have some details around the question regarding the timelines.
So, just to bring folks up to speed, work has begun with contractors for that end. That includes work on the timelines specifically, and I actually have an internal document here that lays out, just working from the back, so folks get an idea of the process. The goal right now is to present that plan to the school board at, in June. One of the things, however, that we, just so you know, that we've built into the process are periodic checkpoints, so that if we reach a position where it seems prudent to push that timeline back in order to deliver the best possible product, we can come forward and hopefully, you know, share that information with you proactively, as opposed to waiting until June and then telling you it's going to be another two months. So, that, June is the, the current target date, but I just want to make sure that we're clear in setting the expectation that depending on how the process goes, we may come to you at some point and say, we're going to need a little more time. This is obviously a pretty big lift, and we're trying to, we're trying to do some things that I think it's fair to say are not, are part of traditional kind of school capital planning. So, we're trying to get more outside the box, so to speak, particularly as it relates to being entrepreneurial around some of the opportunities that, that may be there. So, and prior to that, prior to June, the plan would be to bring it to the ITC Committee for some preliminary vetting, again, hopefully in May, and then, you know, we have a schedule that, that works back and includes a period of public input, as well as obviously bringing, bringing some of the ideas and recommendations through a vetting process with both the city and Burlington Electric Department, because they are contributing to this process, and they have their own interests in, in making sure that it's a success.
Thank you. Any further questions for Commissioner Kirk? Commissioner China.
Can you guess what my question is?
No.
No, but Commissioner Judson's going to have one after you.
15.
Commissioner Judson?
It's with Finance and-
No, he, he's winning.
At five, it's at 5:30 at Ira Allen. And then, we're going to, we'll have a combined meeting, and then I'll go to Finance.
So-
Seven o'clock, Finance will start, half an hour together.
So, what's the combined meeting time start?
Five thirty.
Seven o'clock.
The combined starts at seven, okay. I'll be there at seven.
The combined starts at seven, not six thirty.
Okay.
That's correct, what she said.
Alright, thank you.
You got it.
Everyone's welcome.
Any further questions for Commissioner Kirk? Thank you. Seeing none, Commissioner Stoll, Finance.
So, Finance did not meet in July. We're about to head into the heavy finance season, so we gave ourselves a break. And as Director Labrie talked about, the administration has been working on research, so we will be hearing a little bit from them next month, and then more as their schedule shows the following month. And then, the only thing I would say is, just to reiterate what David talked about, that we will be doing a little bit more coordination between ITC and Finance. That seemed particularly important, given the capital plan and the new high school. So, I think that's a good move. So, we're going to try this overlap meeting. Everyone's invited, and if that goes well, maybe we'll make that into a regular thing. So, this month, Finance will be meeting next week on the 15th, instead of the 4th, Tuesday, as it usually does. Any questions? Anything else to report?
Commissioner Judson, did you have something for, for Finance Director Labrie?
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, I wrote it down.
I know, I was thinking Finance. Behind us, sorry.
You're there, you can-
Well, the question is, is actually-
Go right ahead.
That's okay.
Go right ahead.
Question for Nate. Nate, when I asked you if the kindergarten, parents, the possibility of the kindergarten parents was woven into what you were talking about, is the same true for looking at restoring some of the cuts at the high school?
I don't know what you're referring to specifically.
English teacher, parents.
So, I know, I can't say that I know all of it in detail, but I don't believe that those, those issues are, are part of the consideration.
The reason I ask is because I'm hearing from parents about their students not being able to take classes, because the number of offerings have been cut, or the number of sections have been cut, and the students can't get into the classes. And so, the question that was asked of me to ask at the board, next board member, board meeting was, might the sections, for example, I don't want to be too specific, as you were saying, but, for example, might some of the sections, like a history class that went from three to two, might, might that be restored for next year?
I think for next year, that conversation, you know, could be continued, I would say, but that's not part of the, the process that I'm aware of. Like, you know, I'll double check this to make sure, but I don't believe that's part of the process we're talking about right now, that we're doing the research on.
Okay, and the process that you were talking about, I understood is a big picture of what the needs are. Can you describe again the process that you're looking at?
Sure, just one moment. Okay, so, in May, we had administrative, well, actually, I can add a few things. It, this, the whole timeline, again, which is available on Board Docs, started back in April, and there is a period of time for administrators, staff, parents, board members, et cetera, to identify some issues with potential implications for the development of the FY-17 budget. And then, Howard collected that feedback, and taking that, he brought it to the administrative team for a review of some of those issues, and for a chance to kind of walk through those issues and, and get a flavor of what might be realistic to explore in the time period that we have, and, and kind of prioritize what was on that list. And from that preliminary list, Howard in particular, you know, assembled the administrators, and they formed some groups to think about some of the issues that, again, I, I discussed earlier. And to my knowledge, that was not one of, kind of, bringing back, I'm not even sure quite how articulated issue, but kind of, you know, revisiting some of those teams at the high school was not something that was on that list.
Alright, thank you. That answers my question. Thank you.
Commissioner Curry.
I just wanted to add for further clarification around the budget process. So, what the Director of Finance described was an outcome of a conversation between the interim superintendent and the board, where we had some very difficult budget decisions to make, and the interim superintendent proposed that there be kind of a parking lot for a lot of the, the cuts and the impact of the cuts, and a lot of the community desires. So, that parking lot, the process that Mr. Labrie is describing, that parking lot was known to the full board, you know, before the new board came, came into being, and they promised they would research those issues. There was a list of issues. So, when you hear comments now about difficulties that people are realizing, the impact of the cuts now, now that we're in a new school year, we're certainly seeing those impacts, those would be the kinds of comments to encourage constituents to come out and talk about when the budget hearings begin, again, and the public process begins this fall.
Thank you, Commissioner Kirk.
I just have, just got one other question. Nate, I know the, I know the audit's not done. Do we know how we finished last year? How far over budget did we actually go? I know there was some, some unanticipated funds, but I'm still kind of curious on where we landed on what we were supposed to spend and where we did spend.
So, we haven't made any kind of precise statements, because we wanted to wait for the outcome of the audit. So, at this point, and in fact, our auditors spent last week visiting our beautiful city. And so, at this point, we are, we still remain confident that we will be in a position where we, we're not in an operating deficit for any reason. But we still think that we may well have spent more than the $67 million budgeted amount for a combination of reasons, some of which have to do with, with simple changes in accounting that force us to recognize certain items as expenditures and offsetting revenue, which drive up our expenditure numbers. So, again, if you go back into some of those details, there are things that, to some extent, we covered months ago when we foresaw them, but at this point, we are not going out and kind of speculating on where we think we'll end up, because we've seen, over the last few years at least, a substantial number of audit adjustments that made a really big difference in the bottom line. And given that this is my first time through working with the auditors, I don't feel comfortable kind of going out and putting a number out there, just because I feel like it automatically creates something that we'll be asked to defend, when the reality is, until the auditors completed their work, I'm not really sure we're in a position to, to defend it.
Alright, thank you, Nate. Commissioner China.
When you, when you speak about changes in the way that we're accounting for expenditures, is that an example of what you, you've referred to as changes in how we're doing housekeeping? And do you anticipate that during this year, those changes will settle, so that, moving forward, it'll be more clear year to year?
The answer to your first part of the question is yes. The answer to your second, second part of your question is not exactly, because even today, our, our new senior accountant identified a similar issue, where a certain type of revenue was, has previously been recorded as simply a reduction in our expense, when it's most appropriately recorded as a revenue against an expense. And so, it's confusing, but in short, if you, if you take a source of money that's coming in, and you apply it against money you've already spent, and say, well, we spent $100, but we received $100, so we're going to say that we spent zero, that looks very different on your financial statements from saying, we spent $100 and we earned $100. Right? In one case, you're spending nets out to zero, or is zero, in the other case, while the, the net amount is zero, you still have a spending number of 100 and a revenue number of 100. So, I apologize if that, if it's, that's difficult to follow at this point. I'm happy to go over it in more detail with folks individually, but in short, it's an example of where a change in accounting can make your, both your spending and your revenue look higher, even though the net impact on your bottom line is the same.
Thank you. Commissioner Judson?
I had a comment that I think relates to Ann's question about- Comment that I think relates to Ann's question. But it goes back to Mark, something you said about just the nature of our budgeting process and the timing, and I would love, as a board member for Clarity, I think would be helpful for the public. So, I'm looking at our calendar, and it says that back in April, there was an opportunity for administrators, staff, parents, board members invited to identify the issues, et cetera. Those get put in, then research is conducted over the summer, we come up, and then we have public discussion groups for all of that activity in October. I'm wondering how we'll treat those things that might come up in those public discussion groups. I feel like in the past, what would happen is, some would come in those public discussion groups, some lobbying group would have a certain amount of energy about it, and then there might be action taken around further looking into that, whereas to do that now would seem to undermine the whole process. Like, why did we do all that if we could be waylaid in October by people who have energy about some topic, but that didn't fit into those other eight months, it wasn't part of that? So, something got identified the prior April, and had, was put into a priority thing, and had proper due diligence, but then something gets identified in October, and if that thing in October gets the same due, that something back in April that didn't seem appropriate. So, and if that's the case, if we're going to have fidelity to the plan, I think there should be communication and preparation with the community, that we've had this process, these things have been prioritized, that's where we're going to move forward to. It's not that other things are important, but they may not fit in right now, if we're going to proceed that way.
Commissioner Curry.
That's an excellent point, and that's really good information, I think, for the Finance Committee could maybe put it on its next agenda to talk about a process for the budget hearings, to specifically-
People's expectations.
Deal with that, yeah.
That's right, going into this.
I'd like to, like to respond and say that, you know, every year, the budget process is slightly different.
Sorry, can't hear you down here.
Oh, sorry.
Better?
Every year, we don't have a set budget development process that we've used year over year. Every year, it's been a little bit different. And this year, being the first year for Director Labrie and having interim Superintendent Smith, a process was developed. So, I think the board had some input into the process, and at this point, discussions at the Finance Committee and from the interim superintendent have been basically that we are waiting for the administration to provide us some more details about what that outreach process will look like, and they do have some ideas and have been thinking a lot about it. So, I just want to make sure that we don't redo the wheel that we may have already done, and that they may have some really good ideas. So, I would invite anyone interested in, in Finance to come to the Finance Committee meeting. I, I can look at our agenda, Director Labor and I, and perhaps Mr. Obeng, we can all meet and talk about what the appropriate agenda should be like. It's a transition time, given that we're changing superintendents, and there may be differences in opinions and ideas going forward. So, I would just, I guess, ask for people to have a little bit of patience, and it may be that we can't have a discussion such as what was put out next week at our meeting, but I will definitely keep it in mind, and we can talk about it at our meeting, and if it seems appropriate, to begin to discuss what that outreach would look like, and how to discuss expectations and how to publicize it. That would be great. It may be that that has to be pushed off just a little bit, but I really, I appreciate your bringing up the issue, and also just want to say that this is a slightly unusual situation, given the transition. So, you know, it's on the docket.
Any further questions for Commissioner Stoll?
I guess I just, that's all for me. I just wanted to clarify for me. I'm less interested at this point in which direction we go, as opposed to clarity, right? So, so just that, whatever, you know, we can, that it is, is that these are, it's a transition time, a lot of change, but I think that there should just be a clear understanding of the public when they get involved, what that involvement looks like. And, you know, I, I personally don't know now what that looks like. I know that my peers and friends and neighbors are going to come in expecting their thing to be looked at then, and if that's not how it's going to roll, I think we should just inform people that we have a process, it's a new process, but we're going to try to have fidelity to that process with all due respect, here's what it's going to look like. And, because I think, you know, to tail wagging the dog, if we have, you know, a process where people come in, you know, two months, a month and a half before that-
people come in, you know, two months, a month and a half before the actual decision's made, and we begin a conversation about looking at something then, that's just not very sustainable, doesn't seem.
Mr. Obang?
Yeah, I think, I think there is some differences in terms of, I know we're in a transitional period, but one of the challenges, I think, that always happens is the difference between the consultation meeting and the information meeting, where the consultation meeting is we're actually gathering data, information from people so we can input. And then sometimes we have information meetings to share, this is where we're going, this is what we're doing, and people come with the understanding it's a consultation. They say, "We also want this, but we've already passed that stage." So, those are some pieces, yeah, I know, I hear people talking about clarity in terms of, you know, going forward, maybe we'll have to structure a process where we're clear about what's the entry point for a community to actually give their real input around the things that they want to see held or things that continue. And then the information meetings is really articulating what we've done, and this is where we're going, and then the fine tuning, right? So, we don't want to set ourselves up or our community up for expectations that we can't meet. I'd hate for people to come to think that, okay, this is a consultation meeting, they're gonna get a chance, and we've already passed that stage.
Any further questions for Commissioner Stoll?
My head, Brian. No? Oh, okay. All right. Oh, I know, okay, I got it. All right.
Before we do anything further, I do have some cleaning house to do. So, sorry, Brian, I mean, I knocked the wind out of you on this one. You know, we've almost been on vacation for the last couple of months, and we're, I just want to make sure everybody's prepared for what we're about to come into. We're gonna be going into the, easily the less inviting time of the year, which is the budget process, which is one of our most important tasks, second to bringing on a new superintendent. We face enormous challenges this year with the 2.18 percent. I think the current interim superintendent, Howard Smith, has said that just all things being normal, we'd be in the three to four percent range. And, you know, where the state has said, if you spend more than 2.18 percent, you're gonna get penalized double for every dollar over that on the per pupil spending. So, we just need, really need to make sure we set these expectations when people are approaching you on things. And I know as much as anybody, I don't want to disappoint anybody on this, but you really have to bring it back to the reality of, we have 2.18 percent. 1.75 was cuts last year, 2.18 is gonna be in the same realm. It's just, it's not gonna be a comfortable time. It's gonna be a matter of making priority calls, and some are gonna succeed and some will not. So, I just wanted to make sure everybody's in that, in that mindset of working, working through that. It's, it's, you know, those of us that went through it last year, it's not a fun, enjoyable time, but we will get through it. Commissioner Seguino, I believe you're setting up one-on-ones with Yow? No?
No, my understanding is that Mr. Obang is talking with board members visually.
Yeah, what kind of process do you want on setting up, on setting up those individual meetings with board members?
We have sent out a communication through my executive assistant, Marianne, to solicit times that you're available. I think a few people have already indicated we've been ready, so if you haven't received that, you should have received that communication. I'll have her send it out again tomorrow, so please respond. I'm open anytime, morning, noon, or night.
Be careful.
And look forward to that opportunity, so, yeah. I also did send, if you do get a chance, the invitation was also attached with the survey, that information, so if you got that, then you got the invitation, so, but I can have Marianne send that out once again, so people can respond to it.
Thank you. In addition to that, the, Howard has said that he'll be more than willing to meet with each one individually for, you know, for a closeout, closing session with each one of us individually, and what it'd be like, and so on. Frankly, I'm very appreciative of all of the efforts that he brought forth when you go back a year and a half ago. Was it?
No, it was a year, last fall.
Yeah, less than a year ago.
Was it? It seemed so much longer.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, we went, we went through some very, very tough times, and it's obvious that it was due to the strength of this board that we got through that, and we can all look at each other and we all know this, that the roles that we took that were far beyond what was asked of us, normal school board, so. But, we have the transition coming up, and so I know Howard wants to, we'll certainly have a celebration for Howard because where he, where he put us and how we got to where we are. And we're coming up on the budget time. The, next up, the Commissioner's Corner on Channel Seventeen. We do need volunteers lined up in advance on this thing, and I apologize, Rob's a nice guy, he usually calls me and says, "Here you have for this Thursday," and I'm like, "Oh, my God, Thursday came up so fast." So, Commissioner Seguino?
I'm gonna just propose an idea in that policy and governance take over organizing this and soliciting in advance commissioners to commit to various months and perhaps identify topics of interest. Certainly during budget season, it's a really important forum for us to be able to respond to communities' questions and to share thinking about the budget process and so forth. So, just want to propose that policy and governments take on the task of organizing that, and we all sign up far in advance so that we don't have to be doing this at the last minute each month.
Sure thing.
When is the next one?
They are, once a month, the first Thursday of each month. And there's, so there's twelve of them, and there's twelve commissioners, so there's an opportunity for each commissioner to do it once a year. But I'm happy to take other ideas from the policy committee.
What are they exactly like?
Sorry, I think Ann's...
They're actually, myself and, I'm sorry, myself and Commissioner Seguino did one, it was a conversation. And so, it can be, it's really quite comfortable. Do it with somebody else, and, I mean, we all know some of the topics that we talk about, and if you need some help on those, we can certainly help you with talking points on H46, on, on our ideas about policy governance, about Yow, about Howard, about how finance is now controlled. So, we can give you plenty of information on these things, and you're more than welcome to have two or three of you do it. I think it's forty-five minutes?
Yeah.
Forty-five minutes? And it's really quite comfortable. It's not a, it's not a limelight kind of atmosphere, it's really quite nice.
I believe Ann was, I'm sorry, Commissioner Judson was in the middle of a question.
Thanks. Are we meeting before the next RETN?
No.
No, I mean, our committee. Go ahead.
Before the next what?
RETN request that one of us come and talk.
Okay, so clarification, RETN films our school board meetings as the educational network. Chittenden County, Chittenden Community, CCTV, sorry, apologies to CCTV, is the public access channel that films government, variety of shows. So, they provided us with a slot called Commissioner's Corner at CCTV, not RETN.
And it is the first Tuesday of every month?
Thursday.
Thursday.
First Thursday of every month. Is policy and governance meeting before that so that we can identify who that person will be to speak on...
So, policy government, governance is meeting the fourth Tuesday of every month. I believe our task is to come up with a proposal to the board, that we come up with a plan for staffing it. I, you know, I didn't want to jump to the conclusion that each committee member, each commissioner would take a month, that would be nice, but I think at the policy governance committee, we'll just talk about a plan that we can bring back to the board in October. But, having said that, if anyone is interested in taking the next Commissioner's Corner, please let our chair know.
Commissioner Chena?
So, we need, we need someone for this Thursday.
No, we had it last Thursday.
Okay, so there's not that urgent, that's what I was unsure about, so there's not that urgency that we need to suddenly fill a space at the last minute?
October first is the next one.
Yeah. I'd, I'd like to just, I like your idea of having different commissioners, but I'd like to throw the idea out there that maybe one of the first things we do is talk about our goals, since we just approved them, and that's like, you know, before we get into the thick of the budget. Although, it might also be good in October to invite people to the, use that as a chance to invite people to the forums that are happening, so I just want to throw that out there, since I'm not on your committee.
Sure.
So, you'll be there October first?
Not necessarily. We could talk about it.
Nice backpaddle.
It's possible.
And lastly, the one thing I just wanted to bring up was the, I'm sorry, Commissioner Judson?
Just per earlier things, Mark, I was wondering, I like that you are preparing us for the challenges ahead, I was wondering if you could talk us through about your anticipation of the timing, so we're gonna have budget in full swing, we know what that is. What might the dovetailing with contract talks be?
Yes.
What's the timeline for that? And is there gonna be, like, January's gonna be hot for both of them?
It's in parallel. Yeah, it's in parallel. Commissioner Judson?
I think there was a conversation with Carol Ode and Harold Smith, with someone in the State Department about the question of, is 2.14 set in stone for all districts, given the fact that Burlington has such different needs?
No, every, every district was assigned the number between zero and five percent, Marianne? Zero and five percent.
So, some people got higher than two?
Some, some people got double. Some people got less. Some of your neighbors got less.
But the number that we've gotten, that is set in stone.
Got it.
Yes, 2.18.
Commissioner Malo?
To be clear, it's 2.18 percent increase on education spending, correct? It's not...
It's on, it's on per pupil spending, not on the overall budget. So, the overall budget will be less.
Right.
Commissioner Lavery?
Just so folks know, the 2.18 percent that has been discussed was the original estimate. The Agency of Education subsequently, within the last couple of months, I can't remember exactly, published revisions, and our number went down a tick to 2.14 percent. So, it's a small point, but just so folks know, when they're discussing it in the community, they're all saying the same thing, the growth threshold for the Burlington School District is 2.14 percent of education spending.
Thank you. You know, this, thank you for a little bit of the segue here. I would ask that, we're, our meetings are gonna be so packed over the next five months or so, that everybody really take the time to try to educate themselves on some things. Call, certainly call each other, but there's a lot of information out there on the goods and the bads of school districts using policy governance, consolidating, which we're not considering at this time, but I guess there's a couple of dozen supervisory unions that are looking at that in the state of Vermont right now, and, and all these things that were about to get heaped on us. So, if everybody could try to make that kind of an effort, that would be great, just because we might not have the time to get everybody trained on these things before we actually need to use some of them. Okay?
Can I ju, jump in for one minute?
You certainly can, please.
One of our finance meetings, we did do sort of a primer on this, you know, this budget that's come down from the state, how it happened, what it means, and things like that. And if anyone wants, I did pull together some information, and if you want it, you can give me an email, and I can send you some attachments if you want the information again.
Thank you, Commissioner Stoll. Any further questions before we let Brian have his day? Commissioner Harrington, thank you.
Get on the board with one question. Is consolidation something you think we might consider? Or, I had ruled that off my lengthy list if I still learn about it as a new school board member.
We don't have a neighbor that's eligible for that. Everybody's too big.
Everybody?
Winuski?
Winuski's just over.
Just over, just over the forced consolidation.
But, I would add that, that there have been discussions over time about whether there are ways we can consolidate certain programs that would lead to some efficiencies and some financial savings and some better educational outcomes. So, we might not get the benefits of consolidation, but it is a discussion that we've started to have sometimes, yeah.
It is. We have to look at our neighbors and understand that this, just because there's a river between us doesn't really mean much, right? So, we have responsibilities outside our boundaries at the same time. Further discussion? Commissioner Chena?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second?
Commissioner Harrington, seconds. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.